Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the January -- excuse me, June 22 edition of the Planning Commission meeting. If you would please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much, and would the Recording Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Newman? Commissioner Reynolds, absent. Commissioner Roundtree? Commissioner Trappell?
Here.
And Chair Nichols?
Yes. Thank you. And just to clarify, you might notice we only have three members of the Commission here tonight, but all the cases that we're hearing tonight only requires a majority vote, so we're good to go. Okay, so I do have some public comments, but I just wanted to make note here that all the public comment cards that I have in front of me are really associated with the Oakmont case 6A that was pulled, but what I'd prefer to do is actually have you speak under that item because we do need to still call that item. So if there's someone else who wants to speak on public comments on anything that is not on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to do so, although I don't have any cards. If you do have something, drop it off. No cards? Okay. Okay, we can -- well, we'll get to in just a second. First, I have a comment from Mr. Town, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to mention two things. First of all, as you just mentioned, the Oakmont Senior Living project is being recommended for a continuance tonight. That's item 6A on the agenda. The memo that's in the packet identifies that the case would be continued to a date certain of July 13th. Staff is recommending at this time that it be continued to a date uncertain. That is an action that the Commission will take momentarily. There is a -- still an outside chance that it could go on July 13th. If it does, then public notice will obviously be provided, but at this point, staff recommends that it be continued to, basically on an open hearing basis, to a date uncertain, and then notice will be provided at such time as we're certain it will be going to hearing. So that has to do with that case, and then also, in terms of supplemental information, staff did provide supplemental packets with regard to Agenda Item 6E, which is the application by a Regency and Orchard Supply Hardware regarding hours of operation. Staff is forwarding to the Commission and to the public information provided by residents in the area that was received today. And also, staff is recommending that one Condition Number Four be deleted from that case, and staff will discuss that in more detail later tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town. So now we briefly touched on that, but is there anybody here for public comments for an item not on the agenda? Okay. Hearing none, then... Yeah, we will allow people to speak on 6A. Okay. So will the Recording Secretary please call the first case?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A -- no, 6B. 6B. No? 6A.
We are taking comments on 6A, but we are not opening the hearing. It is a hearing requested for continuance, but out of an abundance of due process, we want to be sure that everybody has an opportunity who's come down tonight to speak on that, and then we'll take an action on that continuance subsequent to public comments on that case. No, we are taking comments on 6A, on the proposed continuance on Oakmont Senior Living.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A regarding case Z 2014-70551, SUP 2014-70552, PMW 2014-70553, and OTP 2014-70554. Applicant: Oakmont Senior Living. Request: To allow zone change from RE1 AC (rural exclusive 1-acre minimum lot size) to PL (public lands, quasi-public and institutional lands and facilities zone) involving 4.87 acres. Merge two lots into one, remove six oak trees, and encroach into the protected zone of one oak tree for the construction of a 79-unit, 89-bed assisted living facility. Location: 400 East Rolling Oaks Drive.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Just for clarification, this is not a public hearing, but out of consideration for the many folks who came, we will be allowing you to speak on the case, just for your public comments. And also for clarification, the Commissioners have absolutely nothing in our packet regarding this case, so we have no exhibits, no reports, nothing. So we have nothing to refer to. It's just a time for you to speak. I do have six cards to speak, so being that the case, we'll have four minutes per person to speak. First will be Peter Gomez, followed by Walter Nuss. So, Mr. Gomez, if you could please come forward and give us your name and city of residence for the record, please.
I reside at 272 Rimrock Road. The proposed project is right outside my front door, across the street. My question to the city is the water analysis report and the MND, it does not take into the account Governor Brown's executive orders that resulted in accounting of Ventura requirement to reduce the water consumption by 32%. So the question is, how and when will this be addressed, and will the MND be updated? Because right now, there's a childcare facility there, and you're proposing this institutional building there, which is really going to impact the water, going to increase its consumption considerably. So that's my question to the board here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any question for the Speaker? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll have our staff will be making notes, but again, it's not a public hearing, so won't be responding at this point. Okay. Walter Nuss, and then followed by Diane Gomez.
Greetings. Thank you for hearing us tonight. My name is Walter Canaus, 345 Rimrock Road, City Thousand Oaks, unincorporated area. Just to introduce for all of us, we're only going to speak to a couple of points that we're concerned about, information that's lacking to alert you to, again, want to make sure that when we do meet, that these things have been addressed, and for you not to come to July 13th, whatever, and have to address issues that didn't get addressed in time. So I'm going to speak to one of those issues. The Ventura County Fire Department has, you know, has been addressing the issues in the MND for a facility in a high fire hazard zone. I'm concerned that they adequately address that in relationship to the open space, because as we know, when you have high fire hazards, you have 100-foot setback of vegetation, and that vegetation cut-down could well impact the open space zone that's there, and that I'm concerned about, are they impacting open space zone, and that that impacts the Fish and Wildlife Department? And so I know that they've done standard setbacks and understand of the fire hazards. Separately, the Fire Department addresses the licensing of it being a residential care facility for elderly, and in that licensing product, project, they have to go and address the requirements and needs for fire hazards and sprinkler systems and all the associated things for a facility for an RCFE. My question is, has one leg of the Fire Department addressed the one issue, and has another portion addressed the other issue? Have they really looked at it as a combined system that say, this is an assisted living facility for elderly in a fire hazard zone? There'll be 89-bed facility that have, that they, by their own, the applicant's information, they have three staff at night that support 89 elderly people. If we have a fire hazard and have evacuation, many people are immobilized. It was stated in the MND that none of the residents will have cars. They're immobilized people. Some of them have dementia, and they're not, you know, able to even drive. So if we have a fire hazard and alert, they would have three staff people to evacuate 89 immobilized people that would probably require ambulance and such, and so my question again is, has the Fire Department really addressed the overall issue of both at the same time? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the Speaker? Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Next is Diane Gomez, followed by Catherine Canaus. Forgive my mispronunciation, it's a hazard of this rule.
Good evening. My name's Diane Gomez. I reside at 272 Rimrock Road. Thank you for allowing us to comment this evening. As you can imagine, we are very concerned about the proposed facility going in, the zone change that is being asked to be changed for public use. We're very rural in the area, to the east. Our neighbors to the north and to the west are also rural, and so in addressing, my comment tonight is addressing that the MND is incomplete. I know that many citizens have written letters addressing their concerns, as well as the county. The county has just been notified and has requested their questions to be considered. So the first question that I have is, with the MND being incomplete, will it be amended prior to the July 13th meeting? And if so, how will the citizens be notified? This time, there were only five homes on the eastern border that were notified, and five homes in the Carriage Estate properties that were notified. Ten homes in all that were notified. So will that be a mailing? Will it be the sign that is now posted? I'm also curious if the sign can be placed in another area where through traffic, we'll be able to see the actual notice of hearing. Right now, the property, you know, the sign is on the property, but it is facing a dead end and a roundabout, it's just facing a dead end, so not, any cars that are driving through the area cannot notice it and read it. Once the MND is modified, I'd like to know if that modified MND will be made available to the public so that we can review it prior to the next public hearing, whether that public hearing is July 13th or is at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Next, Catherine Canaus.
Hi, thanks a lot.
Please correct me again if I'm wrong, and then followed by Gordon Goodwin. And your name and city for record, please.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Catherine Canaus, and I reside at 345 Rimrock Road in Thousand Oaks. My property is adjacent, it's very close to where this project is being proposed, and I would like to address the wildlife issues. On our property, you know, we have bobcat and cougar, we have possum, raccoon, squirrels, road runners, many, we once had many of these, many, many quail. I've even seen fox. It's really like a practical Avery out there. I mean, it's like a wildlife sanctuary. And to date, my understanding is that the California Department of Fish and Wildlife has not been included in the analysis of that report, the MND report. And the County Resource Management Agency has requested input from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. So my question is, will this be addressed and made available to the public before the July 13th meeting, or whenever we have the subsequent meeting? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Gordon Goodwin, followed by Lisa Goodwin.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. My name is Gordon Goodwin. I live at 243 Rimrock Road in Thousand Oaks, about 200 feet from the proposed facility, probably the closest residence to the proposed facility. We couldn't help but notice in the MND that they did a viewshed analysis, homes to the north, property to the east, I mean, to the west and to the south, but nothing to the east. As a matter of fact, they indicate that the east property is vacant land, vacant lots, which surprised us, given that we've been living there for 15 years. So our question is, will by July 13th, or whatever the proposed date will be, will they do a viewshed analysis of the land to the east of the facility? That's my question.
Okay, well duly noted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our final speaker is Lisa Goodwin.
Hi, I'm Lisa Goodwin, 243 Rimrock, Thousand Oaks, California. My original question was already addressed, so I'm going to try to move on a little bit here. One of the things that we are hoping is going to happen differently about 6A, or whatever we're talking about here, however you mark it, is the lack of notice that we were given. There are a total of 200 homes and lots that are affected by this project, and only 10 total were notified, and only five in our area. We have, in a very short time, because of the lack of notice, been able to combine or gather, rather, quite a few signatures, over 100 signatures, in a matter of days. It's not something that is... I understand that the notice probably was within the rules of notice, but it was quite lacking in our ability to be very aware of the project and then to be able to respond. We are just hoping that before the 13th or the extended meeting on, or vote on this project, that we will be able to be alerted more thoroughly and given the chance to really study and understand what it is that's happening here, especially the need for a zone change. That probably, for me especially, is the biggest question mark when we see quite a few empty large facilities in town that are already zoned for commercial buildings, sitting empty for years, 10 years plus, and why these developers aren't being directed towards those facilities prior to, I hate to use the word "developing," but to damaging open space, is quite a conundrum. So we're hoping that we will be much more aware of what's going on and involved in the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you all for speaking. As I noted, this really is just a public comments period, so there's really no staff response at this point. However, I do know Mr. Town has been taking notes, and we'll be sure to include that. I know they are in the process of continuing to review the comments already submitted with the environmental document and preparing responses, and we'll continue through that effort. Mr. Town, does you have anything else to add at this point?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to say to the Speakers and others that staff will respond to all comments received on the MND in the next environmental document. That is our practice, and we will continue to do that in this case, so each comment will be responded to individually. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Now, I do believe we need to take a motion to continue this, so if we have a motion either to the date certain as proposed, or as Mr. Town has recommended, to a date uncertain to allow them to duly process the information they've already been provided with.
I'd like to make a motion to a date uncertain for the Oakmont Senior Facility, Subject Z 2014-70551-SUP, 2014-70552-PMW, and 2014-70553-OTP, 2014-70554. That's a mouthful.
Thank you, Commissioner Roundtree. Any further comments? Okay, please vote.
Motion passed, 3 to 0.
Okay, so that means that it will be continued to a date uncertain, and Mr. Town and his staff will continue with the review process with a negative declaration, and when the date is determined, then it will be posted and notified per the city requirements. Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you please call the next case?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6B regarding case SUP 2015-70023. Applicant: Beenvino Inc. Request: To allow the onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine, at an existing restaurant. Location: 360 Via Las Briesas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, and I believe our planner for this evening, Mr. Steve Barrigan, is going to give us a presentation.
Good evening, Chair Nichols and members of the Commission. As mentioned, for your consideration tonight, a special use permit application has been filed to allow the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine only, to an existing restaurant, Beenvino, located at 360 Via Las Briesas, within the Village at Dos Vientos Rand Shopping Center. If you take a look at the PowerPoint, this is the project location, and as you can see, it's bordered by two streets, Via Las Briesas, Via Rio, and on the far side, Via Mirabella. As previously stated, the applicant is proposing to allow the sale and consumption of beer and wine to an existing restaurant. Some project background: In 2002, the shopping center was approved. The subject tenant space has been occupied by Beenvino since 2013. Prior to that, it was the Boni Mountain Coffee Cafe. In May 2015, the existing restaurant was approved for outdoor dining. Other notable approvals include two separate SUPs, which were both noted in the staff report, SUP 2006-70268 and SUP 2008-70441, approving a total of three restaurants for alcohol, including distilled spirits. Two of the restaurants had, also had outdoor dining areas, one having an equal distance from the residential tract 4493. That's basically across from Via Rio. Of the three approved restaurants, there are currently two still in operation. This is the front view of the subject restaurant. And this is an interior shot of the restaurant. Keep in mind that the restaurant is not expanding its floor area, dining area, or adding a bar, so there's no additional parking demand. With regards to distance to residential, the nearest property is to the southeast, approximately 120 feet away, and separated by a landscape area, I'll show you right here, a landscape area via Rio, which is about 60 feet wide and a six-foot-high masonry wall separating the tract housing from the shopping center. Also, there's another one to the southwest, which is approximately 500 feet away, and is separated by an entire commercial building, landscape area, and also Via Las Briesas, which I think is about 80, 80 feet. Keep in mind that staff has touched base with police department requesting the number of service calls for anything such as noise, loud music, illegal disturbances within the last year, and there's actually only been one, which was for suspicious activity. One suspicious individual was doing something, they wouldn't tell me. And as previously noted, the restaurant is not increasing the floor area or adding a bar, so there will be no additional traffic or parking impacts, and the sale of beer and wine will be in conjunction with food service, so someone just can't come in and get a beer or a glass of wine by itself. They gotta, they gotta have some food accompanying it. The applicant is not changing their current hours of operation, which are from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, seven days a week, and police department has reviewed this application, provided, and has recommended conditions of approval that are included in your packet. This project is exempt from CQ since it's a minor change to an existing restaurant. In conclusion, staff is recommending the Planning Commission to approve this project based on the findings in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barrigan. Commissioners, questions of the staff? Mr. Trappell?
Yes, one thing, Mr. Barrigan, and thank you very much for the presentation. You did a great job. Did I hear you correctly that the people aren't going to be able to come in and just have a glass of wine, that they must have food at the same time? That's unusual for me. Is that a new law, or is that just part of the condition, or... Mark?
Maybe I could comment on that. It's not so much that you have to order food, but food has to be available, and that's per, per Condition Number Nine.
All right, that's what I...
And we've had that, that's a standard condition on other cases. Typically, when food is available, people will order food.
Right.
Not all the time, but that distinguishes it from sort of a true bar where food may not be sold at all.
Understand, understand. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Mr. Trappell, anything more? Commissioner Roundtree?
Simple question. With the name Beenvino, why was the liquor license applied for when they first opened the doors? And why has it been two years?
Staff would have to refer that question to the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Barrigan, do you know, happen to know the maximum occupancy of the restaurant and the patio areas?
Staff is not aware of the maximum occupancies. However, since the restaurant is not increasing floor area or adding a bar or something that required a building permit application, it would be equal to the maximum occupancies previously approved for the Boni Mountain Coffee when they submitted their tenant improvement.
Okay, so nothing has changed. Obviously, I didn't notice anything in the report at all. The patio all seems to be intact, fences installed and everything, so nothing structurally or will be changed at all?
The patio was recently put in as of, I think, last Friday. They were, they were checked by our building department for ADA requirements, and also police and fire department reviewed the application as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I didn't have any further questions. Commissioner Trappell?
Just real quick, I'm sorry. I thought I read in here that the outdoor dining area was not constructed. You're saying it is constructed at this point? Is there going to be something different than what I saw out there?
As of last, I think as of last Thursday or Friday, they had put the fences up. Oh, just the fencing.
Okay, okay, all right.
So they're...
Then I'm on the same page with you. All right.
Okay, we can put the applicant on the hot spot for that one. Okay, I've got six cards here. And just to clarify, I've got two speaker cards, and I've got four cards for comment only. I just want to make sure that people realize they're filling out comment cards, excuse me, just the statement cards. So I'll go ahead and start with the two cards that I have. The first is the applicant, Rose Marie Becker. So you will have 15 minutes. And I'll come on down. Please state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Good evening, honorable commission members. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to present our case. My name is Rose Marie Becker, and I live at 146 Via Katrina in Newberry Park, California. I am here to represent Beenvino, a local, woman-owned, small business located at the Village at Dos Vientos. Tonight, we are applying for our license for onsite sale of beer and wine only. We decided to operate this restaurant because we are residents of Dos Vientos, and we want to make a difference. I am at the restaurant every day, front-managing. My family usually comes and help out during the weekends. Since we opened the restaurant in 2013, we have been actively supporting our community. We sponsor and host events and conduct fundraising activities for the Sycamore Canyon School, PTSA, AYSO, the Newberry Park Baseball, Kiwanis, Conejo Open Space Conservation Agency, California Wildlife, Brain Injury Center Ventura, Many Mansions, Miller YMCA Fourth of July festivities, to mention a few. In the almost two years that we have opened our doors to the community, we have always done our very best to be a good neighbor and a responsible business owner. We always considered how our actions would impact the community. We make sure that we are always in compliance with the law and the local regulations. Because of this, we have the support of the community. I have submitted to you a copy of the more than 400 signatures that our neighbors have voluntarily executed to show that they have no objection and they support our proposed project to add beer and wine only to our current menu. I am also attaching a copy of the recommendation letters from fellow residents, Mr. Brad Lingwin and Ms. Robin Close, as well as from our landlord, Mr. Peter Cohen for Capital Paradise Group. We are applying for beer and wine license only, and our intention is to sell beer and wine as part of the meal. In other words, we are not a bar. We are a sit-down restaurant with table service where customers can order from a short list of beer and wine to complement their food. The great majority of our customers will probably not order beer and wine at all, all the time with their meals, as we do offer other beverages such as coffee drinks, sodas, and juices. However, for the other customers that would prefer a glass of beer or wine with their meal, we do want to have that option available. We are excited and proud to be a part of the business community of Thousand Oaks. All of the customers that walk through our doors are excited and looking forward to the inclusion of beer and wine at our restaurant. Our business model is to provide the best customer service and dining experience possible for our customers. We feel that having the beer and wine option as part of the full-service dining experience is greatly needed to help us achieve that. As stated before, we are from Dos Vientos, and as such, we want to contribute to the social and economic growth of the community. Please help small businesses like Beenvino implement the business model we had envisioned for the community of Dos Vientos. Please approve our application for onsite sale of beer and wine. Thank you very much for your time and kind consideration this evening. Thank you, everyone.
And thank you, Ms. Becker. Commissioners, questions of the applicant?
Thank you for your presentation. The question I had for you was when you first applied for your application two years ago, why you had waited two years before you asked for beer and wine with a name like Beenvino, or is it just something you just didn't want to deal with at the time in opening?
Well, during the time when we opened, as you well know, the Village at Dos Vientos is a very challenging commercial complex. We had to make sure we survived first before we forego with our initial plan, which is to have, to offer beer and wine license. That's why our name was, is Beenvino. But it's always been there that we are, that's our plan. We just have to save first.
Mr. Trappell?
I changed my mind after hearing that. The question, you know, especially with Commissioner Roundtree asked it, I'm looking at some of the restrictions with outdoor activities. And being up there, you have no plans for any type of live or soft entertainment out there at all? Because this is saying you're not going to have any of that, period. And you're okay with that? That's what I want to know.
For now, yes. We're okay with that.
Okay.
I have a question for you. There is one comment card, or actually, an email in our packet from one of the neighbors who expressed some concern about potential noise on the patio, and asked if the timeout in the patio could be shortened to about 9:30. Have you had any discussions with any neighbors as far as concerns, and they express those to you, and how you may have addressed those?
So far, there was only one neighbor who sent his objection. And all the residents there that I speak with, that I tell about our plan, have no objections at all.
Okay, have you spoken directly with this particular neighbor?
I emailed him. I tried to reach out to him. I sent him emails and tried to make an appointment for us to talk so we can resolve and come up with a happy medium between the two of us and for all the other residents that... And he would not like to meet because he said he's boycotting the whole complex.
Okay.
I have a copy of the email if you want a copy, too.
Oh, I believe you. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you very much. You'll have another five minutes to reply to any other conversation that comes up.
Thank you.
The only other speaker card I have is Reem Ajal. Please, please correct me. I know I didn't get that right.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak today on behalf of Beenvino. I am a resident of 126 Via Katrina in Dos Vientos. I walk probably three times a week to Beenvino, and I stop there on my way home from work. I've lived in the community for 10 years since the complex, prior to the complex being built. And so we've seen a lot of restaurants and shops come and go. We're hoping with your approval that we'll be able to see Beenvino stay around for a while. I represent the community, and I'd like to read a letter on behalf of a couple of the other members of our community, and then also a letter that was written on behalf of Beenvino by the landlord, who now owns the property of the village in Dos Vientos Ranch. The letter is written by Peter Cohen, and he states, "We own the property located at 330 and 370 Via Las Briesas in Thousand Oaks, Newberry Park, commonly known as the Village at Dos Vientos Ranch. We are writing to you in support of our tenant, Rose Marie and Jeff Becker, and the request to allow the onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine, at the restaurant. Rose Marie and Jeff have been exemplary tenants in the shopping center since the fall of 2013. Despite their best efforts, the previous coffee shop operators at this location, Boney Mountain Coffee, did not succeed. The Beckers had a specific business model in mind when they reopened the doors of the coffee house. In addition to changing the menu and offering a variety of delicious coffee drinks and quality food items, they also wish to offer alcoholic beverages, beer and wine, at their business. They are responsible, hard-working individuals with a social conscience. They have also reached out to unite the community by hosting quarterly events and fundraisers in support of their neighborhood. They are responsible business owners and have received no complaints about them from any other tenant, any visitor to the center, the neighborhood, or the city. They are the type of tenant that every community should embrace. As we believe the planning commission is aware, the shopping center has had challenges ever since it was built. The original owners were unable to attract and retain tenants, and subsequently, the property was lost to the bank in foreclosure. We, as the new owners, have worked diligently with great outreach to the community to bring the shopping center to life. Doing so has required a significant commitment of time, effort, and capital. We have attracted tenants to the shopping center, such as the Beckers, with a considerable investment in order to restore life to the shopping center. We believe the concept of operating a coffee bar with beer and wine is a novelty of the area and will bring in more traffic and business to the Dos Vientos Ranch community. It is important for the success of the tenant and their application to allow the onsite sale and consumption of beer and wine be approved. We request the support of the city to allow us to provide an environment in which our tenants can succeed, so that we can avoid the fate that befell our predecessors and that many of us had predicted for us. We request the support of the city to allow reasonable requests from Rose Marie and Jeff, so that the shopping center can become a vibrant commercial center, that the city and community desire it to be. Please accept this letter as our wholehearted endorsement and recommendation for the approval of Beenvino's application." And then if I may, well, I have two letters here as well from other members that have submitted, which I believe are also in the packet. The city planner, this is a letter written by Brad Lingwin. And this letter is in support of Beenvino's application to serve alcoholic beverages and their business located in Dos Vientos Shopping Center. "I own a home in Dos Vientos Development. Find Beenvino a welcome addition to the neighborhood. Webster defines 'community' as a feeling of fellowship with others as a result of sharing common attitudes, interests, and goals.' Beenvino offers a warm environment for residents of Dos Vientos to relax and get to know each other. The owners welcome all customers with a professional and courteous attitude. A business that facilitates social interactions is desperately needed in times when alienation eats away at our society. Dos Vientos employees have proven to be responsible and prudent group of people, and I trust that they will continue to exercise good judgment once allowed to sell beer and wine. Please consider their application would do hasten's eye, as well as other Dos Vientos residents fully support their wish to expand the business."
Ma'am, you've got 15 seconds left.
Okay, so I'll, I think you have a copy of the other letter, but...
Could you please just state your name again for the record, please?
Yes, Reem Ajal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you please make sure that the recording secretary has a copy of those records, so we can get a copy of those as well? Okay, so I have no additional speaker cards. Staff, do you have any further comments based on anything we've heard? Any questions?
Staff has no additional comments at this time.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff, or anything else to quiz anybody on? Okay, hearing that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that's right. You do, the applicant does have another five minutes if you have anything else you needed to add. No, okay. In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And I'll, commissioners, I'll leave it up to you for a motion. Commissioner Trappell?
Yes, I'd like to move that the planning commission approve SUP 2015-70023 based upon the following findings, and subject the attached conditions of the approval.
Commissioner Trappell, any further comments or questions? If not, please vote.
Motion passed, three to zero.
Thank you. And let me just make sure I get my clarification here. Make sure I get this right. "Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the planning commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the community development department within 10 days." Okay. Madam Secretary, would you please call the next case?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6C regarding Case PPD 2015-70090. Applicant, Greg and Laura Paley. Request to allow encroachment within 25% or greater natural slope to accommodate construction of a single-family dwelling. Location, 977 Bauer Way.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Our planner this evening is Mr. Will Chua. Mr. Chua, if you please, give us your presentation.
Good evening, Chair Nichols, members of the commission. For your consideration tonight is a request to allow encroachment within 25% or greater natural slope to accommodate the construction of a single-family dwelling. This is, on your screen, shows the vicinity map of the project site. The 23 freeway is adjacent to the east of the property. The property, as you see, is on the north side of Bauer Way. Hillcrest Drive is directly to the south of the site. This is an aerial photo that shows the property. There's, as you can see, there's a thick vegetation on the east side of the property adjacent to the 23 freeway. There's also sound wall along the 23 freeway and on the property across the street from the project site. The freeway wall is about 14 foot in height, while the wall next to the residence is about 16 foot in height. The property is zoned RPD 6.3 SFD, residential plan development for single-family homes, and it's located, as I mentioned earlier, at the end of Bauer Way. The site is approximately 3,000 square feet in area. It has an irregular rectangular shape with varying widths and a depth of about 117 feet. The average natural slope on the property is about 32%. The property is located within the Greenwich Village tract and is subject to that development standards. That development standard is Attachment 1 of the staff report. This project is before the planning commission because the applicant seeks to grade in natural slope of 25% or greater pursuant to the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code. Planning commission is required, planning commission approval is required for any encroachment within that terrain. The proposed two-store residence will have a two-bedroom, will have two bedrooms and a two-car garage. The total living space would be about 1,900 square feet, and a garage space about 418 square feet. An upper and lower deck totaling 456 square feet in floor area is also proposed for usable open space. The city's municipal code requires a minimum of 1,000 square feet of usable open space that has 10% or less gradient and screened from public view. In this case, however, it is not feasible for the applicant to provide the required usable open space because of the lot's small size and topography. Staff believes that the conditions for waiver of the usable open space requirement for this project have been met and recommends that the waiver be granted. The waiver is also allowed under the Greenwich tract development guidelines. The subject lot, as I mentioned, has an average slope of 32%. The applicant is proposing to grade approximately 1,700 square feet of the natural terrain that's over 25% gradient. The small size of the site and its natural terrain makes it impossible for the applicant to construct on the site without encroaching into that steep terrain. The 25% slope area is not visible from any public right-of-way. The 25% slope area is not visible from any public right-of-way. Staff believes that granting the request for encroachment will give the applicant reasonable and conforming use of the property, which cannot be achieved otherwise. As far as noise level is concerned, the existing noise level on the subject property is in excess of 65 decibel. A noise wall exists between the house on 978 Bauer Way, which I mentioned earlier, that's about 15 feet or 16 feet in height. That's on the opposite of Bauer Way cul-de-sac. And there's a combination of noise and retaining wall at the toe of the slope immediately east of the subject lot. No sound walls are expected to be constructed by Caltrans adjacent to the lot. Staff is therefore recommending that a six-foot-high slumstone wall be constructed along the property line adjacent to the freeway, which is the east side of the property, from the southeast, easterly corner of the lot to the rear of the main dwelling, approximately 60 linear feet. That's on Condition 5, Suggested Condition Number 5. While building regulations require that interior noise level of the structure be at 45 decibel or less, the solid wall will provide some sort of mitigation for exterior areas in the immediate vicinity of the residence. The property is also subject to the city's freeway corridor guidelines. There's an existing 75-feet-wide heavy landscaping between the freeway and the subject site. The exposed part of the house will have articulation to break up building mass as required by the guideline. This photo shows you a massing study looking southwest from the freeway, basically showing what the house, how the exposure of the house from the freeway. This project is a Class 3 exemption under California Environmental Quality Act as it involves the construction of a single-family dwelling. And the staff is recommending that the Commission approve PPD 2015-70090 based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report. And I'm ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chua. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Chua? Mr. Trappell?
I just wanted to be clear going through the staff report. Mr. Chua, you did a great job as always. But all the grading is taking place on the site. There's not going to be any dirt movement off and back and forth. I just want to make sure I read that correctly.
Yes, that's correct. There's going to be a movement of 40 cubic yards. It's basically a balance grading where there's no export and there's no import.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chua, I have a few questions for you. I failed to bring my Greenwich Village report from Mr. Town, but I was curious. When was the Greenwich Village tract developed that would have created this lot? You can give me a ballpark figure, it doesn't have to be an exact year. 1930s, 1940s?
No, the Greenwich tract itself, you're right, I mean, it's around the... Sorry, thank you. Okay, the tract itself was developed in the early 30s, as you said. But the development standards were written in 76.
Okay.
In 1976, that is.
So this would qualify as an existing non-conforming lot, then?
Legal non-conforming lot based on our current regulations on subdivision map.
Okay, thank you. And can you tell me what defines usable open space?
Usable open space is the minimum space required for a single-family, well, it's a, it's a, for private use by the residents. Based on our municipal requirement, it should be at least 10 feet in, not more than 10 feet in gradient. And the minimum requirement is 1,000 square feet for the first two bedrooms and 200 square feet thereafter. This is for the, for the outdoor use of the residence.
You said 10 feet gradient, meaning 10% gradient?
10%, yes.
Okay, so that's why the lower portion of the lot really is not usable, because it's just too steep?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I noticed, this doesn't happen very often, but I showed up at a street that I'd never been to before in my 30 years here in the city. I noticed it was a private street. Who owns the private street?
I have no idea, but the city, I think, is taking over that private street. And Mr. Town may be able to clarify that issue?
That's correct. The City Council recently authorized that the city will be accepting both Bauer Way and Vinson Court as public streets. They've been heretofore privately maintained.
Okay, thank you. And then I noticed that the Bauer Way right-of-way then, which it will become, goes all the way to the freeway right-of-way. And so now there appears to be a gap between the two lots there. Is that just going to be a vacant piece of land then? If that's no longer private, the city open, will that be, will the city landscape it somewhere? What's going to happen to that little piece of property there?
Maybe, I'll comment, I mean, there are no plans immediately to landscape that area. It's something that could be raised with the Public Works Department, but I think their intention in taking over the streets is really to provide for street maintenance rather than landscaping improvements. But it would be within the public right-of-way, as you can see on page 26 in the aerial photograph. But I'm not aware of any plans to landscape that now. Perhaps the new, the developer can comment if they'd like to seek some kind of an easement from the city to landscape that for private benefit.
Okay, all right, thank you. Applicant, be prepared to respond. Question regarding the city wall, the city standard for wall. Is that, and it was recommendation for six feet tall. Does that include more fences, retaining walls, sound walls? Any kind of a wall or fence is six feet, or is that specific as to certain types of fences or walls?
No, the fence requirement for, the standard requirement for fences in the city of Thousand Oaks is six feet high, whether, irregardless of the material.
Okay, so it doesn't matter what you call it, it's still just six feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And question regarding the six feet. I know the six feet doesn't compare anything to what Caltrans puts. I mean, they, obviously, they're immune from our own ordinances here. They put in some pretty tall walls. Is six feet going to provide adequate? I mean, it just seems to me probably not quite truly a sound wall. It's just going to provide some minimal sound mitigation. Was that the intent, not to provide the mitigation that a total 14-foot wall would provide, but just a minimal amount? Is that how come the, or is it just because six feet is what the city allows?
Well, first thing is, first, realistically, I've spoke to the civil engineer, one of our civil engineers about this, and if they're going to provide a 14-foot or 15-foot-high wall on that property, it will be very impossible cost-wise to build such wall. And to be able to go around that, we're trying to keep the noise as much as possible at the most feasible way we can. Now, going up to the six feet is the height where the city does not require any sort of engineering. If they go anything higher than six feet, engineering would be required for the wall and that would incur additional expenses for the applicant.
Okay, thank you. That was all the questions I had unless I spurred any other questions. Okay, in that case, we will move on to comments. And I have one speaker card from our applicant, Greg Paley. If you'll please come up and state your name and city of residence for the record, please. And you will have 15 minutes to present your case.
Thank you, Chairman Nichols and members of the Commission. I appreciate the time to present the case and share with you the application. My name is Greg Paley. I live at 345 Flitner Circle in Thousand Oaks. And I'm happy that you were able to see a new street here in the city of Thousand Oaks. I've been a longtime resident of Thousand Oaks. My family moved out here in 1976. So in that past 39 years, with just the exception of a couple of years, been here the whole time and it's allowed me to realize what a great city it is to live in and more recently, raise a family in. So with that said, I've worked diligently with staff to come up with a proposal for a project that staff can support and my family, myself, my wife and my daughter would be happy to live in. So I think we've done that and I just want to make myself available for any questions you may have. In response to your question about the landscape, possibility landscaping the private street, the end of the private street that it sounds like the city's going to take over responsibility for, we'd be happy to landscape that. So, any questions, please? Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Mr. Roundtree?
What year did you buy the property?
I haven't completed the purchase yet, but I've been under contract for about a year and a half to purchase it.
Okay, and were you familiar with the 25% gradient rule? Or did you learn about it after you submitted plans, or?
I, it was my understanding at the time that it only, it only applied to hillside, the HPZ overlay. And then after submitting my application, I found out that it applies to all parcels in the city, not just the ones with the hillside protection zoning.
Mr. Trappell? Thank you for coming down and thank you for doing this. You've obviously had a, Mr. Paley had the time to go through and look at it. Are there any conditions that you have any trouble with whatsoever as staff has presented them to us?
The only condition that was included that wasn't a part of my original's application is the six-foot wall. And after discussing it with Mr. Chua, we're in agreeance in that condition, so we're fine.
Okay, so all that's good?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I would have to say, once you live there for a while, you will be happy for whatever you can get for a wall.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Any other comments before we let you go?
No, that's all. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, if not, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I have no further cards. Mr. Chua, anything to add from our discussions or questions?
Nothing to add.
Okay, nothing to add. Commissioners, any further questions? Commissioner Roundtree?
Mr. Chua, we've had the 25% rule come up a couple of times before and I always ask the question about, is it precedent-setting? Probably not, but every case is, you know, unique. Is there anything unique about this project that other applicants are waiting to, for the ruling on this before they run out and do the same thing, or is this pretty much just isolated to this street?
This is pretty much isolated to this street and there's no other applicants that I'm aware of that's going to do the same thing here.
Mr. Trappell?
And following up on Commissioner Roundtree's comment there, one of the things that makes this work is because the applicant wouldn't be able to really have full use of the property without being able to do this, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Mr. Town?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, on the six-foot wall, that was a, a condition of approval that staff developed and frankly, it was not intended to serve as a sound wall. It was designed to provide some level of sound protection for the entrance to the home, for the side facing the freeway. For any of you that have been out there onsite, you'd appreciate that, just to create a more habitable space at the driveway and at the front door. So the, the height of the wall was based in the city standard for residential perimeter wall and fence treatments and that's where the, the height came from. Also, going back to the PowerPoint, to Mr. Chua's PowerPoint, there was an exhibit in the PowerPoint that showed a massing study. I just wanted to be clear for the Commission, thank you, Mr. Chua. This is a, this is not a true photo simulation of the building as proposed. It's a, it's a massing study that was done by the applicant and we included it here to give the Commission, you know, a sense of what the site could look like with the house. It does depict the accurate height, but subsequent to this massing study, Mr. Paley did set back, in fact, the second story and provide additional articulation so that it will be less blocky, it's viewed from the freeway, which brings it into consistency with the city's freeway corridor guidelines and precise plan of development standards. So I just wanted to make that clear that this was intended just to show the approximate sort of bulk of the building. Since this image was created, additional refinements have been made, particularly to the second floor setback.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Mr. Trappell?
I'm really so sorry, but Mr. Town was talking and he brought up another question that I didn't think about before. So if, if, if time moves on and noise does become an issue and something has to go higher up there because of a noise element, does that come back before us, this body again?
Well, the, Caltrans, after talking with our Public Works Department, does not have any intention to install a sound wall along the side of this subject lot. So they have looked at the area, obviously, a few years back, they built their sound walls sort of in Thousand Oaks. There's a few going up now that are related to the 23 101 interchange, but the ones along the 23 freeway essentially are done. And they opted not to put in a sound wall here. Maybe because the lot was vacant at the time, we don't really know, because there is one adjacent to the house across the street. But they have no intention to, to build a sound wall at this location. Again, the intention of a six-foot-high wall was to have a height consistent with residential neighborhoods and to provide a little bit of protection as compared to, say, a wooden fence. Obviously, the, it could be built taller, but as Mr. Chua mentioned, sort of every foot you go up, it's, it's much more expensive to design and maintain. And as always, when we have noisier environments, the interior noise level has to be reduced to 45 decibels per the California Building Code. So that has to, has to occur based, and it'll be based on the building materials themselves. So if in the future, the applicant or a future resident wanted to increase that wall, the perimeter walls and fences could be increased at a staff level, up to 50% greater, so it could go up to nine feet. Anything over nine feet would have to come to this body. But there would have to be, you know, findings made to increase the height. So theoretically, it could be increased in the future. They would just have to wait and see if the future, you know, owner would want to do that.
Fully understand. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Commissioners, any further comments? Mr. Paley, we really haven't had anything to debate, but you do have another five minutes. If you've thought of something else you wanted to add to your presentation?
No, I haven't.
Okay, thank you. In that being the case, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion or discussions from the Commissioners.
To make a motion to approve PPD 2015-70090 based on the findings and subject to the conditions and approval attached to the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Roundtree. We have a motion, any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion passed, three zero.
And let me just make sure I cover my bases here. "Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the Planning Commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the Community Development Department within 10 days." Madam Secretary, if you'd please call the next hearing.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6D regarding case DPMJ 2014-70576. Applicant Engen at Enterprises, Inc., Taco Bell. Request to modify operating hours to begin at 7:00 a.m. daily and close at midnight, Sunday through Thursday, and 1:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday. Location 1928 East Avenida de Los Arboles.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I have three cards, two speaker cards, one written statement card. Oh, thank you very much, thanks for the reminder. But I didn't see anyone marked as an applicant on these cards. Was there an applicant? Okay, okay, very good. Okay, I got that clarified. So this evening, the, let me get this here. Okay, planner for this, Mr. Will Chua. So, Mr. Chua, if you continue on with your presentation.
Again, good evening, Chair Nichols, members of the Commission. Taco Bell is requesting to extend its operating hours to open earlier and close at the later hours. No change is being requested for delivery hours. Taco Bell is requesting operating hours from 7:00 a.m. to midnight, Sunday through Thursdays, and 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. the next day on Fridays and Saturdays. and 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. the next day on Fridays and Saturdays. Taco Bell originally requested to open at 6:00 a.m. Now, in discussion with concerned neighbors, Taco Bell has agreed to modify its request to open one hour later at 7:00 a.m. This is the, a vicinity map showing the Taco Bell property. Across the street is the residential neighborhood and as you can see, the rest of them, Taco Bell is surrounded on the three other sides with the commercial center, the Oakbrook Shopping Plaza, basically. This subject property, as I said, is within the Oakbrook Plaza Shopping Center. The restaurant is adjacent to Avenida de los Arboles. The, as you can see, the residential property is to the north, across the street from Avenida de los Arboles. The, as a short history, the Oakbrook Shopping Center was approved in 1980 through DP 78417. Taco Bell was approved through a major modification for that original development permit. The approved operating hours was 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. daily. There are other commercial uses on the three sides of the restaurants. The nearest residential property across the street from Avenida de los Arboles is about 220 feet away. There is also a block wall alongside the residential properties, which varies from five feet to six feet in height. The planning commission recently approved extended operating hours for the McDonald's Restaurant and the Starbucks Coffee. The approved operating hours for Oakbrook Shopping Plaza varies between 6:00 a.m. and 2:00 a.m. The approved operating hours are, for the, and the proposed hours for the restaurant are listed in that table at the screen. To evaluate noise impact from the drive-through operation, staff requested a sound analysis which was prepared for, by the applicant. The drive-through speakers were measured at 49 decibels along the north property line adjacent to Arboles. The sound level for the drive-through meets the limit set for, in the city's noise element for residential areas, which is 55 decibels. The city has not received any complaints in direct relation to the operation of the This project qualifies as a Class 1 exemption under CEQA as it involves a minor change in operation of an existing restaurant. Staff is recommending that the planning commission approve DPMJ 2014-70576 based on the findings and subject to the suggested conditions in the staff report. And staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chua, for your free report. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Chua? Okay, Mr. Chua, I have a couple of questions. I know there was discussion between the neighbors and the applicant, but can you tell me why the, why there, or if you know, what the discussion was that led to going from 6:00 to 7:00 in the morning for a start time?
I have not, I have no information exactly on how that came about and maybe we could get that from the applicant or the neighbor.
Okay, then I'll wait to the presentation for that then. Okay, so we'll get started with our presentation. I believe Mr. Brent Flynn is the applicant. If you could please state your name and city residence for the record, please, and then I have one additional speaker card, Mr. Frank Malar. So, Mr. Flynn, you'll have 15 minutes for your presentation.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Chairman Nichols, commissioners. My name is Brent Flynn. My residence is 861 Kai Pacos, Thousand Oaks, California. I think Mr. Chua's presentation and report is very complete. I'll just add that we've been, our company has operated Taco Bells in the community since 1968. We do desire, obviously, to be good neighbors and represent Taco Bell and the community. We did have the opportunity to meet with representative of the neighbors on several occasions and as a result of those discussions, hearing their concerns, and our 6:00 a.m. application was really more in the future. We've kind of, Taco Bell's just kind of started getting into breakfast, so, so we're satisfied with the 7:00 a.m. amended hours in our application. And we're also satisfied with, you know, with the report as written, with the conditions, and we're prepared to proceed based on those, and we just asked for your approval tonight for that application. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Roundtree.
What are the operating hours for the other Taco Bells in the Thousand Oaks area?
We open at 7:00 a.m. Both the, two of them have drive-throughs, or three of our four restaurants have drive-throughs in Newbury Park on Windy Drive and on Rancho Road. We open at 7:00 a.m., those as well, and we stay open till midnight and 1:00 a.m. also on Windy Drive, and we stay open until 1:00 a.m. and then 2:00 a.m. on Rancho Road.
Do you remember the last time you asked for an extension of time, or when it was a year ago, five years ago, 1975? I'm just trying to basically take a picture of how often restaurants in town are wanting to stay open even later, and then later, and then later.
Yeah, this is our first application. We opened in 1987 at Avenida de los Arboles and we moved our location to Windy Drive about six years ago now, so I think 89, sorry, 90, sorry, 2009. So that was a separate application at that time, it's part of that plaza.
Just as a bit of comparison, if you looked at other Taco Bells in other regions, would you consider Thousand Oaks to be restrictive in their time zones and other cities are far more open-ended?
Yeah, it varies, but we, we see a lot of 24-hour, you know, operations, and it's not unusual also to be 4:00 a.m. on weekends, but, you know, we're really, it's, it's kind of a declining returns and from our perspective at that point in time and with our employees and things, so, so we don't see ourselves going in that direction definitely in Thousand Oaks, so.
Mr. Flynn, I have a couple of questions for you. Again, what I asked Mr. Chua, initially you requested 6:00, you did mention that that was something you just wanted to have in your hip pocket for the future, didn't expect to open. What was the discussion or what was it that caused you to say, okay, 7:00 is good enough?
Well, our priority was on the later night hours, so that's, that was just really a compromise that we worked, we worked towards with a representative of the whole, of the neighbors in the community there. So McDonald's obviously had, is opening at 5:00 a.m., so, you know, we thought, okay, 6:00 a.m. is something we might move towards. Taco Bell really launched breakfast a year ago nationally, so that's something that we're, you know, trying to grow in that area, but 7:00 is really where nationally we're opening for breakfast right now and probably will be for a few years to come, so, you know, maybe in the future we'll be back if that day part starts to grow and apply to open a little bit earlier, but I don't see that happening at this time, so.
Okay, 'cause I know, I think Commissioner Roundtree is kind of hinting towards that we do get these things periodically and we try to provide a, a window, if you will, for businesses to kind of flex a little bit and, you know, maybe it's good for, maybe not, but at least they have the opportunities, and I will hear from Mr. Malar from his perspective as well. But we try to at least expand that window as much as possible and then if you need to shrink, you're certainly welcome to, but if you want to expand, then you have to come through this process again.
Right.
So we just want to make sure that, you know, that we're getting everything covered and that you don't go back and say, gosh, I wish I could have. So this is part of our concerns here. Now, one of my concerns, and, you know, let me know if this came up in your discussion, McDonald's took the lead role in this last time and they, you know, pushed it through and went through the city council and got a 5:00 start time. Now, it seems to me you've got two restaurants here side by side, you know, one's restricted to 7:00, one's at 5:00, and I don't know that there's justification that you could say, oh, Taco Bell is so much different, we, they shouldn't be able to start until 7:00. Was that part of your discussion as to, you know, what are the differences between the two locations?
Well, I think it really comes down to, again, Taco Bell, we're more of a, of a late-night, that's really our target area. McDonald's is very much breakfast, that's, that's their target, so I think we, we considered that, we're, you know, we're again satisfied at the 7:00 at this time. McDonald's, you know, the average McDonald's will do more business for breakfast than most of the competition does the rest of, the whole day, so it's, it's very critical for them, obviously, to have that 5:00 a.m. For us, it's, it's a small part of our business, so, so I think we, we thought it was, with some of the issues that have gone on in the center in the past, we thought it was a good, a good compromise and prudent course for us to, to accept the restricted hours at 7:00.
Okay, and then trying to address the, the noise issue in particular, I noticed the Taco Bell speakers are 39 feet further away from Avenida de los Arboles than the McDonald's speakers, so you have that to your advantage. I was also noticing, I was out there Friday afternoon and also about 10:00 last night trying to listen both sides of the street. Would it be possible to twist the speaker at about 45-degree angle so it points even just a little bit further away from Avenida de los Arboles? And could you put a, some type of a shroud that obviously doesn't become a traffic hazard, but just again, to try and direct that noise? Has any of those things been considered?
Yeah, we, we have an awkward drive-through configuration there, and if you noticed, our, our menu board, our literally, our speaker board, our speakers right beside the menu board, and there's, we're really constricted in terms of where we can put things. We have our walkway, which has to be a certain width for ADA and access to the back door, and we have our, you know, our drive-through lane, obviously where it is, and we have our property, so we're a very tight spot there. So, you know, we, we've tried to put it in a where, in a location where we have a good, you know, we have our, our drive-through window, we have room for a couple cars in between, and we have this kind of pushed, if, if anything, we would probably prefer to have the menu board moved back closer to the homes, but we've pushed it forward again as far as we can to, what, what'll happen sometimes is cars will, you know, we have a larger order at the window, we'll get a couple in between, and then you won't be able to get to the speaker, which is obviously inefficient. So we tried to, tried to optimize it in that manner and also considering the distance from the, from the homeowners. You know, the study did show, and it was done late at night, that we were well within the, the guidelines. Six decibels is quite a large number, so, you know, it's, there's really no way to move anything in there, you know, unless we were to really literally move the building or move the drive-through lane, we're kind of, we're kind of stuck from, you know, because we did just do a remodel at that location too a few years back, so that was part of the, part of the consideration, but.
Okay, well, thank you. I guess I'm just trying to fill in the blanks, 'cause I know there's, like I said, the differences between the two seem to be virtually identical as far as one restaurant speaker to the next, and I didn't know if there was some, something that I hadn't considered as part of your discussion, so appreciate that.
Right, right, yeah, and certainly we wouldn't be unhappy, obviously, to have the 6:00 a.m. that was our original application, but again, we're trying to, trying to, you know, move forward and prioritize the late-night hours.
Okay, very good. Anything, anything else before I let, okay, thank you very much. You will have another five minutes to follow up with.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Frank Malar, if you'd please come forward and if you'd state your name and city residence for the record, please.
Frank Malar, Thousand Oaks. This is amazingly easy. We're here to support Mr. Flynn and his efforts to go to the hours that have been agreed to as mandated by the city council. And we worked very hard, actually since last September, on all the properties that are in, we're considering tonight, and we support what's going on. So we've got a packet supplement, which we've provided with the next hearing, and we can go into more at that time, to the extent that you choose to do that. So, are there any questions?
Well, since you brought it up, I'm asking one question. I noticed there was, as you mentioned, correspondence for the following case, but there was nothing regarding this case. Was that just curious?
That was, truthfully, that's my mistake. I, I was looking at all of this as one, and, but it was organized as two separate things, and we've had the same level of detailed discussions with all of these folks at length in meetings, emails, telephone calls. This has been going on for months and we've settled on, as the city council insisted, we have come to a detailed agreement that I think is acceptable to everybody. So it is separate, it should have been, it should have been handled by me separately and I didn't do that.
Okay, okay, thank you. That was what I was trying to clarify.
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Malar? Commissioner Trappell?
I'm kind of confused because, because we got the supplement later, you know, earlier today, and I'm looking at in our packet and we're looking at the Taco Bell proposed 7:00 a.m. to midnight Sunday through Thursday and 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Friday and Saturday. Is that what you're agreeing with too?
Yes.
You guys come?
Yes, sir. It certainly is.
Because the, the one on the supplement is saying 5:00 a.m., and so, and I just got this this afternoon. Mr. Towne?
Yeah, just to clarify, the, the supplemental packet that we distributed has to do with the next case with the Regency slash Orchard Supply Hardware application, and this one is Taco Bell, and I think what we're hearing is verbally from Mr. Malar that neighbors, Mr. Malar himself, are okay with the Taco Bell.
So that supplement is 6E?
That's the one, right. That's 6D that we're on right now.
Right, but the supplement that we got was?
Supplement is for 6E.
All right, we're on the same page. Thank you.
And Mr. Malar, if I could ask the same question to you that I asked Mr. Flynn. Their initial request was 6:00 a.m. and you've agreed to 7:00 a.m., and yet you've got McDonald's right next door, which is 5:00 a.m. Seems to me like, gosh, if you got one at 5:00, why not both at 5:00? Obviously, that wasn't their request, but just was curious as to what the discussion was that led to finally coming to conclusion at 7:00?
This, in the, in the short period of time we have here, I really would like to get into this, and, and as a matter of fact, I've had a, a very productive discussion with the planning department on the same topic, and that is the relationship between disturbances and hours of, of opening. And there's a, there's a strong tendency to want to separate those two, and that's very understandable, very understandable, but that doesn't gel with our experience. So, and as a matter of fact, I, I gave Mr. Towne just this morning the example of, at 5:30 in the morning, Mr. Flynn had a tandem tractor-trailer, two, two trailer, tractor-trailer, sitting in front of his store, and the reason that we knew about this was because there was a disturbance prior to that truck coming in, and we observed this and witnessed it. And the driver was at McDonald's. So it, there's a, in this one narrow example, to try and give you something specific in order to answer your question, there's a, a bit of, more than a bit of a concern, and there are other examples that I could give, quite a few, that there might be a, shall we say, truck stop-type environment being created by 5:00 a.m. coffee sto, coffee and places, and, and it's a pretty great concern to the residents. So we shared that with Mr. Flynn, and I think we resonated about concerns on both sides from, from his point monetarily and his targeted marketing and from our, in our case, as far as disturbances go, and we settled, as the city council required us to do, on an agreed set of times.
Very good, well, thank you. And just for clarification for the planning commission, you're representing the homeowners group?
Very good, I appreciate you asking that question, and it's in the packet. We were required as part of the mandated negotiations on McDonald's to assign two people. John Gensvein, who is a retired LA sheriff's deputy, who lives around the corner from me, and I, were nominated and, and by petition were assigned the, the role of representing dozens of residents that are up and down this particular neighborhood, which is in the southern part of the homeowners association. It is not the homeowners association as a whole, okay? So we call ourselves the Concerned Residents of Oakbrook Village South, okay? And it's basically, it's 40 people on a busy, people are upset type day, it can be 50 people.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
All right.
So thank you. Any further questions before we, okay, thank you so much for your time and also for your commitment.
Okay, very good.
That was the only remaining card that I had. That was the only remaining card that I had. I did pass along one statement card. So, Mr. Chua, if you could address any questions or comments that you may have heard come up for us, please?
I don't have anything to address at this point.
Mr. Flynn, do you have anything else to add for another five minutes?
No.
Okay. Commissioners, any final questions before I close the hearing? Okay, that being said, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And Commissioners, open for questions, comments, or discussion in a motion. Mr. Trappell?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion. I always like to see it when, when residents get together with the, with an applicant and work things out. I think that's the way to do things. So with that, I wish you all the best. And I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that the Planning Commission approve DPMJ 2014-70576, based on the following findings and subject to the attached conditions of approval that are in our packet. And staff, you did a great job. Thank you.
And I too would like to, again, thank the, not only the business owner, Mr. Flynn, local resident, which is always helpful to see, and concerned citizens, you know, working together to make this work. I know it's been a long process, and hopefully, there's a relationship established. We can continue to work as we move forward. So I know we're got another hearing before us, but I just wanted to put that in there while Mr. Flynn was here. So any further comments? Okay, please vote.
Motion passed, 3-0.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Any grieve party who wishes to appeal the Planning Commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the Community Development Department within 10 days. If you could, Madam Secretary, please call our next case.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6E regarding case DPMJ 2014-70581. Applicant, Regency Centers Orchard Supply Hardware. Request to allow operating hours to begin at 5:00 AM for five businesses at the Oak Brook Plaza. Location, 1730, 1736, 1772A, 1772K, and 1934 East Avenida de los Arboles.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And once again, our planner for this case is Mr. Will Chua. Mr. Chua, if you'd please give us your presentation.
For your consideration tonight is an application for change in operating hours. Regency Centers is requesting to allow four businesses to open at 5:00 AM. These businesses are the coffee shop, the donut shop, the dry cleaning, and the Subway sandwich shop. ASH, in short for Orchard Supply Hardware, is requesting to be able to open at 7:00 AM Monday through Saturday, and 8:00 AM on Sundays. They're also requesting to be able to close at a later hour of 9:00 AM, I mean, I'm sorry, 9:00 PM from Mondays through Saturdays and 8:00 PM on Sundays. The subject properties are located within the Oak Brook Shopping Plaza. The 23 freeway is on the west side, which is on your, the left side of the screen, and the residential properties are on the north and south sides. The subject properties, as mentioned earlier, are within the Oak Brook Shopping Plaza. The red outline shows the subject properties for this case. The whole Oak Brook Shopping Center was approved in the early 80s through DP 78417 and 78422. Both entitlements requires, requires that the operating hours for the businesses in the shopping center to be from 8:00 AM till 10:00 PM daily. The approved operating hours for the Oak Brook Shopping Plaza varies between 6:00 AM and 2:00 AM. This is, like I said, the whole shopping center. The approved operating hours and the proposed hours for the businesses as the subject of this application are listed on the table, which is shown on the screen right now. And this table shows the proposed, the approved and the proposed operating hours for ASH. As you can see, there's a very slight difference between the approved and the proposed hours. On the average, the gain for operating hours for ASH is only about one hour daily. The proposed hours for Regency and ASH are within the range of the approved hours for the shopping center. The businesses are separated from the adjacent residential properties at the back by the building itself, a driveway, and the perimeter wall. All customer-related activities are conducted at the front of the business, at the front of the businesses, and are no, and there are no amplified sound that may cause disturbance to the residences. Staff recommend, is also recommending that the commission remove the condition number four as per supplemental packet. This project qualifies as a Class 1 exemption under CEQA, and because it involves a minor change in the operation of the commercial center. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve DPMJ 2014-70581 based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report. And I'm available to answer questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chua. Commissioners, any question for Mr. Chua? I think I'll just save my question for the applicant. Mr. Town?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make a quick comment on condition number four, which, as you saw in your supplemental packet, staff is recommending that it be deleted. This was a condition that was developed by staff, and it was developed by staff, as noted in your staff report, sort of looking longer term, in terms of whether existing tenants may need to move tenant spaces, or comparable businesses may want to move into the sort of western portion of the, of the Oak Brook Plaza. However, this suggesting condition was only really released in the Planning Commission packet that went out last week. So the applicant, the neighbors did not have a chance to look at it. We did think it was worth raising, and so we did. But also, since that time, have received, as staff, additional information from Mr. Malar. And we did meet with Mr. Malar this morning to discuss that. And I think in this, to stay in the spirit of trying to work out hours of operation at this center, which are compatible with the neighborhood, which are compatible with businesses, staff feels at this point that it is better to withdraw that condition, to delete it. It would, it would signify that other businesses of like nature would need to go through the same process. But that has been the process in the past. And I think this is, again, more consistent with the City Council's spirit, which did hear the appeal on the McDonald's hours of operation case, and also involved mediation. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, because this was a staff recommendation originally, and it's a staff recommendation at this time right now. So, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Town?
I think it's a great idea, not just to make a blanket recommendation, that any kind of business that moves in, that bakes cookies or whatever, can fall into the same thing, even though it would be simpler and easier. But where we get the community involved is when they can come and sit at a commission meeting, or give feedback like the residents have, on a business-by-business basis. So I would commend you for reversing your decision and going a different direction.
Mr. Town, could you also clarify that I believe the approvals would be for specific tenant spaces and not necessarily specific business operations?
Correct. These approvals before the commission tonight are for specific tenant spaces, as noted in the staff report. So those hours of operations sort of run with the land, they run with the tenant space. It would mean that if one of those businesses occupying one of those tenant spaces today were to want to move to a different tenant space next year, or a larger tenant space, smaller tenant space, whatever their business needs are, that they would need to go through the Planning Commission for that other tenant space. Okay, so, so these are not, as we noted in the staff report, these are, this is not a Regency Center-wide change in hours. It's for four very specific businesses, all of whom need early morning hours due to their business operations. You have coffee shops, dry cleaners, et cetera. And so that's why they're asking for your consideration tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Town, for the clarification. Commissioner Trappell?
Yeah, I'd like to, if you could follow up on that, Mr. Town, because, so if I, and I wish I had looked at this a little bit differently earlier. I guess I misinterpreted it. But, so if we take the subway that is in a particular location in this particular plaza, and they move to a different space within the plaza, they lose the hours of operation?
That's correct. These are for specific tenant spaces. It's, as other hours are established for a certain parcel at the Oak Brook Plaza.
And the logic, the logic behind that is because of where these particular areas are located within the plazas? That's where there's more noise, or?
It's based on the logic that originally, the entire shopping center was approved for hours of 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And, and since that time, there have been a number of individual changes to hours of operation. But from the, from the sort of beginning of this shopping center, there were stated, stated concerns in the staff report, and through those hearings, that noise was something that had to be carefully controlled. And so, out of an abundance of caution, I think, over the years, individual requests have been made for extensions of hours of operation, but not center-wide type changes. So the, the proposal before you tonight is, you know, specific, and it's somewhat restrictive. But it, it is the application as submitted by the applicant. It was staff's idea to consider broadening it, but in a limited way, to similar businesses. But again, based on the fact that all parties just heard about that condition relatively recently, A, and then B, that we received concerns from neighbors about those, the expansion of that 5:00 AM opening to other businesses, we feel it's prudent to, to recommend withdrawal of that condition. Obviously, an application can be, can be submitted in the future for other businesses. But at this time, this is, this is the core request from the applicant.
Okay, and I completely agree. The, I think the withdrawal of condition four makes a whole bunch, makes a lot of sense. It just seems strange that if I was owning a Subway shop, and then I moved it somewhere else in the plaza, that I'd lose my ability to operate because that particular tenant space. I just didn't read it that way. But this is coming from the applicant, and everybody is on board with this, as far as we know. But we haven't heard from the applicant yet, so.
We'll hear from the applicant. Mr. Town, as a follow-up to that, if Coffee Bean were to relocate or fold, and a florist shop were to take that tenant space, would they then be able to open at 5:00 in the morning to start their business?
That is correct.
And Chair, if I may, and good evening, Commissioners. You see tonight, and with past experience that you've had before you, the projects, you see this struggle that you have with new tenants coming into a complex. And just over time, over years and years, you see different uses come in. Some, unfortunately, restaurants might not be successful, or some businesses might not be successful. So a new one comes in, and they say, here's our game plan of how we want to, to, to run our business. And you even heard that today, one of the first applications or projects today, where you asked a question about why they didn't ask for a liquor license or approval for beer and wine earlier. And they were looking at, can I be successful in this business at this location? And that was one of their concerns. When we do hours of operation, sometimes we look at the future as well, and whether or not a particular business at the time is going to use those early hours or late hours. It's just that we're trying to avoid, sometimes a new tenant comes in and realizes, oh, wait, I can't open at 7:00. I'm, I'm only open at 8:00. And, and that struggle that they might have. And so that's the balance that we try to make. And staff is looking at this constantly with that eye of the future too, to say, can we open up something at a certain time? And again, it's with the parcel itself. So that's kind of where we get stuck here. It doesn't mean, there could be a lot of examples where you have a business that opens at 9:00 or 10:00, but they have approval for 7:00 in the morning. They can stay open until 9:00, but they close at 6:00. And so that's where you have this, you might have different operating hours that you actually are entitled to pursuant to the approvals. So, I'm not sure I clarified anything. I'm just trying to, I see your questions, and I, it goes to this constant balance of what's there at the time. And for staff, it's trying to think of the future as well. If there might be a new tenant coming in, do you want them to go through a process for one hour to have the hearing? And sometimes it, it happens that way, and that's what happens in this location. This is kind of a mixed bag at this location. So it's, again, over time, you've seen these changes that come in.
Mr. Town, would it be possible, or maybe you can tell me if this is a part of your consideration, to have this type of authorization, non-transferable, where in my same scenario, the flower shop takes over, but that 5:00 opening was only good for that business in that location being Coffee Bean? And that way, it's for a specific purpose, for a specific business, at a specific location, rather than at a specific location where businesses may come and go, and then you have a, in a sense, I wouldn't say non-conforming, but a type of business and a tenant space that would not typically need a 5:00 opening?
I think the logic is, is that when hours of operation are expanded, they're expanded for a particular location. The notice requirements for a tenant space versus, tenant space one versus tenant space five, for example, is no different. We still notice based on the parcel. So we notice folks in the area. But nonetheless, I think the logic is that these extended hours are for a particular place, which bears a certain physical relationship to its surroundings, both in terms of proximity to neighbors, in terms of what may serve as, as essentially noise barriers between that subject and the nearest residential areas. And so while in an inline-store setting, it's not as important. It is important when you talk about a center like this, where you have multiple owners, multiple parcels. We have 10 different owners at the Oak Brook Plaza. So that historically, the intent is to approve extended hours here, and there, and there, and not for the entire centers, because each of those has a somewhat unique location relative to residential properties nearby. And as I said, that has always been a, a goal of the city since the development permit was approved in 1980. So, you know, for 30-odd years, that's been a goal. And I think that's part of the way that the city has tried to, to reach that goal.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Please do.
I'm so sorry.
But I got to get this cleared out here.
I'm just trying to wrap my head around, I wish I had written this and, and made some phone calls earlier. So I just want to have an example, so I understand what's happening. So you have the Subway shop there. The tenant next door vacates, and the Subway shop expands into the two spaces. I don't understand putting hours on, on, on a tenant space. It doesn't make sense. It makes sense if they, if they all of a sudden are taking up two sides, you know, of two doorways, and they expand next door. What happens to the hours? I mean, do you see, I think, I, I understand the concept. I'm having trouble with the wording of it.
Well, the, I understand your concern, and that was part of the, that was part of the rationale behind condition number four when we first developed it. But again, historically, noise concerns have been an issue for the city, I mean, from the get-go. And that's why any changes in hours of operation require, at that center, must come before you, as the Planning Commission. That's a specific requirement in the original development permit, that it's a, it is a major modification at this center to change hours of operation. In other centers, that's typically processed as a minor modification, meaning that it's dealt with by staff, except on appeal to this body. So... So, that was, that's part of the historic fabric. It is restrictive, we get that. In the scenario that you mentioned, if somebody wanted to expand through another tenant space or two tenant spaces, they would have to go through this same process, come to this body. The public noticing requirements for a hearing like we're doing right now, it takes a couple months.
Or they'll open up one half first at 5:00, and then the other half later at 9:00.
You could just, exactly, keep that. So, I understand there's, you know, there's some, there's some, there's some room for questioning of it. But as I said before, I think the overall intent was trying to pin down the locations for extended hours of operation. In the Regency Center, I believe, we have 31 tenant spaces. Only two have been allowed, only two have requested, I think, but two have been allowed to have extended hours. So, most of them are still operating under the original hours. And I'm, and the applicant can speak to this momentarily, but, I mean, I'm not aware of any immediate plans for these four businesses to move. I'm not insinuating that. But again, in the spirit of trying to come up with solutions for this center, which are sensitive to the neighbors, are sensitive to the tenants and owners, and the fact that we brought this proposed condition up late in the process, figuratively, literally, and we did receive some concerns from a neighbor representative this morning, from Mr. Millar, that's why we're now recommending to go with the original application.
Well, no, and I understand that, because the, when I went through the packet, I kind of figured out why Condition Number Four was placed in there. It made sense. And then an explanation from staff as to why it was coming out is fine. So, you know, I don't want to belabor the point. I'd like to ask the applicant a couple of questions.
And let's do that right now. So, our first speaker, the applicant, is Patrick Conway. If you could please give your name and city of residence for the record. And just to clarify, I have three speaker cards and three statement cards, so the applicant will have 15 minutes, and then the speakers will have five minutes of each. So, Mr. Conway, please proceed.
Thank you. Patrick Conway, Los Angeles. Good evening, Chair Nichols and members of the Commission. Thank you for your time tonight. This application goes back, I think we initially submitted it back in November of last year. So, we've had quite a bit of communication, you know, just like the Taco Bell application and McDonald's before that, with the community. You know, initially, it was made clear to us that we really need to be a little bit better neighbor than we were on kind of how we operated our shopping center. We make quite an effort to do a better job of that, and I would thank the community for bringing that to our attention to make sure that we get deliveries done right. We do keep, although we're in the back and not necessarily up on the street, you know, we still need to make sure that our vendors show up at the right time, and our deliveries show up at the right time. And, you know, not every operator was doing exactly what they needed to do, but I think we've made that effort. And, you know, and I think we expect that to, you know, continue, you know, into the future. And now, we have a nice dialogue with our neighbors that if we have any issues that we can, and someone gets a little bit out of order, we can make sure that that gets remedied relatively quickly. With that said, we're okay with the removal of Condition Four, and although it's very specific for these, you know, several tenants, this is a very stressful process for them. We realize maybe down the road. It's kind of a cumbersome process, it's an expensive process, you know, to do regularly, you know, for tenants, but we don't expect a tremendous amount of change. We do hope, you know, as Albertson's has converted to Hagan, to make a more significant, you know, redevelopment of this property at some point, and that there might be some changes there that are more significant with uses and relocating of tenants. But, you know, for this application and for this time, you know, we just want to keep our guys in place and kind of take this burden off of them, and we can renew some leases and kind of keep them in operation. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Commissioners, questions of the applicant? Commissioner Trappell.
Hi, just to bring this up a little bit, you know, and I can't tell you how to run your business, but you don't, it's not difficult for you to have a specific space within the center, and if somebody moves out and somebody wants to, you know, move back in and, or move over, it's not going to, you're not going to have an issue telling them that, well, this space can open up at 5:00, but the one next door can't open up till 7:00?
Yeah, that's a problem. It really does handcuff you to a certain extent. But if Subway did want to expand, we would have to pay the major modification application fee, you know, get a staff report to expend them from 900 feet to 1800 feet.
So, you're all good with all that weight setup?
I'm okay with it.
I just want to hear that from you, because I'm having trouble with it, but, okay.
I am, too, but it's, I need, these guys need to feel comfortable that they can operate.
Well, staff is pretty smart, but I appreciate it, so if you guys are good, that's, I'm comfortable.
Mr. Conway, there's a few comments about noise. We had some comments about the Taco Bell, but just in general. And in reading some of the correspondence of the materials provided by Mr. Millar, whether there's a direct correlation to operation hours, or whether it's just deliveries or maintenance, as this discussion has progressed, how have you been able to try and target what the issues are and what are the possible resolutions to try and minimize this noise and obviously interruption of the activities of your residential neighbors?
I really would, because, you know, we're inline shops primarily for what we own. We don't own any of the out parcels. So, we're, most of our operations are set pretty far back. We don't have some drive-throughs or other things that are typically kind of big concerns noise-wise as far as our operations go. So, we really look at making sure that we, our tenants get their deliveries on time. And for the most part, you know, with this, with subways and these types of, we have a lot of service tenants that don't, you know, really don't get much in the way of deliveries. We have a few soft good tenants, you don't get the high volume traffic, you know, in some of these. I think the biggest concern is, because we manage the shopping center, is to make sure we manage our vendors to be responsible. We require them that they can't be on site before 7:00. That's not always the case, you know? Sometimes if they're there, it's 6:45, they're there and they get their sweeper, or they start their steam cleaning. And, you know, part of that is just making sure that we manage that process. And they did it a couple of weeks ago. They showed up at, you know, 10 minutes before 7:00, and they started their work. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, sometimes with the, with the, you know, the types of jobs that are, you know, that are out there at 7:00 in the morning or 6:30 in the morning, sometimes it always doesn't translate from the office to the truck. And you do have some turnover in these types of service vendors. So, we are constantly, and we try to get a vendor where we can manage a number of centers together, so that, you know, we laid it on the line to them, if this happens one more time, notwithstanding guys losing their job, this account's gone. So, we really need, and we're a pretty good client for some of these vendors. We have a number of properties in Southern California. We have many of them in, you know, 300 across the country. So, we're a pretty good account, so we can carry some weight, but it's just something we constantly need to manage with the account managers, the sweepers, the steam cleaners. So, it's, and it happens. But as long as we're consistent and diligent in the way we manage our properties, it should be an occasional mistake. And that's where I think if the communication with the community that we have, or if they notice something, now it's a phone call, it's a quick email, it's not necessarily something that's brought to the city's attention, that we handle it as neighbors. And if someone, if we had a new sweeper come in, or a new driver, and they didn't get it, or they didn't, you know, they left early and didn't hit traffic, it doesn't mean you can start early. So, I think it's about, just like graffiti, if you see it, you take care of it in the first 24 hours, it's unlikely to show back up again. But if you let it sit, you let it grow, it really becomes a problem maintenance-wise.
Do you have staff on the premises?
Not on the premises. We do have a local office in Thousand Oaks, so we have an assistant property manager that's there two days a week that services a few of the local properties that we have. But it's not a center that necessarily, like a mall, where you can really have an on-site manager. It's just not that large for a grocery-anchored kind of strip center.
And is this site as Regency a management company or a property owner?
A property owner, but we also manage it in-house. We manage all our own properties.
And are there some overall guidelines that helps you get along with the neighboring parcels that you don't own, and yet you still have to work together as a team?
Well, sure, and I think we've, this process is kind of, we've, although each parcel is kind of on their own, and they have their own issues with the neighbors, just like Taco Bell, so we're kind of a separate application. They had some other concerns, maybe a little closer to the street, or they had a drive-through. But, you know, collectively, we've, you know, we've had discussions internally with all the different owners and the neighbors, so it's together but separate, if that makes sense.
Okay. That's all I had. Commissioners, any further questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Conway. You will have another five minutes of rebuttal once we hear from the other comments. Next will be Susan Schatzke, and then followed by Frank Millar.
My name is Susan Schatzke. Not only here as a, on my own personal representative from Oakbrook Townhomes, but I'm with three other board members, four of the five board members from Oakbrook Townhomes, number one. Just a couple of things before I address our strong objection to 5:00 a.m. opening of any restaurant or any store, is the lack of transparency. Because when we came here tonight, we thought, from seeing the signs that were put up, and then I received a notification of this hearing, we were pretty sure that the reason all this came to be was because of the switchover from Albertson's to Hagan's supermarket. It wasn't until we got here tonight that we found out that the application involved OSH, which has been there for so many years, and the three other small stores that are requesting this change. So, we really feel like we've been, the lack of transparency has been shocking to us. Just a little background, Oakbrook Townhomes, number one, is a community of 352 condominiums. We're a townhome mainly association. The main entrance of our community is on Avenida de las Flores. You enter from two main streets, either Moss Court or Sonoma Court. The back end of our community is running along the service road that services all the stores in this shopping center. If you, if you go there at any time, you can see that many of the delivery trucks turn in onto Herb's off of Arbalis and go into that back service road. On one side, on the left side, is the start of the Woodlands Homeowners Association, and then you continue to Oakbrook. So, we have a large amount of our community impacted by these trucks going back and forth. Now, it's interesting that, one of the things being considered that this won't be a hardship is because there's no drive-through. But the fact is that the delivery for OSH, the subway, the doughnut shop, not so much, I guess, the cleaner, is that, is running along the service road, which is right against our community. And part of our community not only had to deal with the freeway noise until the sound wall came in, but also deal with all these trucks going back and forth and hearing air brakes. I live on Arinda Court, so I'm further away, but if I step out onto my patio, I can watch, it's almost like, you know, the relay races, I can watch the trucks going back and forth on the service road. It isn't the same situation as where Taco Bell is, because they have, the next community has Arbalis separating it, but we don't. We are, the back of these stores runs along the service road, and that's where our community's walls start. So, this would really be a hardship. Now, a couple of us actually live, I'm a long-term resident in Oakbrook, and we remember when the shopping center came to be, and they met at that time, I don't know if it's still the same ownership or not, but they came to our homeowners' association meeting and told us of the details. And it has been pointed out that a strict policy of 8:00 a.m. startup time was formulated then. That has been working so well for 30-something years now. We don't really see the need for a few stores to change a policy and really give us a hardship of a noise level that will really impact the enjoyment of our homes. Also, just one last point, we didn't hear, you keep mentioning the last gentleman, I didn't catch his name, about how he's met with the community and all, and yet, 352 units, we've heard nothing. We had to have our property manager try to find out, what is this about? Nobody went to meet with us. We would gladly have had him at a homeowners' association meeting, as we did 30 years ago when the original store plans came into fruition. So, I really, speaking for myself and our community, and who wholeheartedly are so opposed to this, we ask you, please, do not change the existing rules to 5:00 a.m. I mean, a compromise, sure, 7:00 a.m. maybe, but 5:00 a.m. is a hardship, and it really is, and it impacts our lives in a very negative way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Frank Millar, if you could state your name and city of residence, and you'll have five minutes, please.
Frank Millar, Thousand Oaks. Thank you, Chairman Nichols and Commissioners. As much as I'm here to actually support and honor the agreement that's been reached by the neighbors on the other side of the shopping center from the previous speaker, I have to say I empathize with her, and it's obviously something that the Commission will consider. But that having been said, we have, on our side of the shopping center, looked at a lot of this also, and in the end, we've negotiated with the actual applicants here, and in the end, we have to say that we feel that we've gotten the best deal that we can get. And that's really the way we look at it. And indeed, while I have the microphone, we've had quite a few interactions with various entities, and I want to acknowledge the Sheriff's Department, and as a matter of fact, Deputy Bouvet here. When I told him I was here to support the position, I think he almost fell out of his I don't have a reputation for supporting the expansion of hours usually. The code compliance has been very extraordinary in their efforts. As a matter of fact, Planning Department has just gone to great lengths to consider a lot of important details, and I think they've given due consideration, and they need to be acknowledged for that, especially Mr. Towne and his staff. We were appreciative of the efforts that have been made by all different levels of the city, and we also appreciate the concerns of the City Council that was very explicit in about how these things would best be handled, and that seems to be endorsed by your Commission. So, it's not ideal. This is, this is not a perfect thing, but in the end, we stand by our negotiation, and we support the applicant, and all the applicants in this expansion of ours. So, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Millar. Questions for the Speaker? Commissioner Roundtree. Mr. Millar, you represented the group of folks north of Arbalis. During that process, did the idea of the folks who live behind the complex come up?
It has, sir, and I really, I would like to talk to them offline about this, because there's a history here which has... there's a history here which has, basically, the conclusion was that that wouldn't be productive. We did talk to the townhomes that are down from Marbella's, and they expressed interest in what was going on last year. And so we've looked to a broader circumstance, very definitely, but the answer to your question here is, on this specific circumstance, the answer is no.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Malar.
Okay. Very good.
That was the final speaker card that I had. The rest, I have three statement cards, which I've passed along to the fellow commissioners for review. So at this point, Mr. Chua, if you could address any concerns or issues that you may have--
Yes, I do. I would like to, I would like to respond to the comment by our first speaker, Mrs. Susan Schatzky, I hope I got your name correct, regarding delivery trucks. Now, if I could get the commission to turn to page 70 of the staff report, condition number five addresses Mrs. Schatzky's issues regarding delivery trucks at the back of the property. Now, and if I may, just to read it off to everybody, so everybody can hear what it exactly says, and I will quote, "Truck delivery. Truck delivery and loading operations shall be conducted only within previously approved hours. Idling trucks or operative refrigeration or other mechanical equipment on delivery trucks causing a disturbance to a person in any residential area are also prohibited outside of these hours. It shall be the sole responsibility of the business owner and/or other onsite personnel of the business to take appropriate action to ensure that any attempted delivery or other disturbances caused by delivery trucks is immediately ceased." And that's unquote. Now, for the hours of operation, or hours of delivery, the hours of delivery is set between 7:00 and 9:00 p.m. daily. To further go, in addition to that, we also address other issues that may be related to truck services, that's not delivery, and that is under condition number six, under other services, and I will read that again, and I quote, "Other services. Other services related to the operation of the businesses, including but not limited to activities using outside materials or equipment that cause a disturbance to a person in any residential area, shall be conducted between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. only. It shall be the sole responsibility of the business owner and/or other onsite personnel to discontinue disturbances occurring on the business site caused by restaurant-related activities, and to instruct all vendors or persons conducting such activities at the time, restraints." Now, and unquote. Now, these two conditions came by when I received a call from a member of that community to the south of this property expressing concern regarding idling vehicles. And I was told that, you know, there were a point in time when there were some truck, delivery trucks waiting to make a delivery, who are, whose engines are kept idling because of their refrigeration equipment for the perishable goods that they have. So that's why we crafted this condition, to address that issue, although this is not directly, completely related to the hours of operation. In a way, it is, because, you know, earlier hours, some people may expect to be able to deliver, make a delivery earlier, and in a way, we're trying to, again, address the issue that was brought upon us by some of the residents that live in the property to the south, basically at the back. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chua. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Chua? Commissioner Roundtree.
Mr. Chua, I'd have to agree with you that by changing the hours of operation, even though it says in the report and the law says, you know, deliveries are at 7:00 o'clock in the morning, there's going to be an automatic, almost a natural tendency to sometimes show up early, or to park there, and to keep the refrigeration truck running and so forth. So there's going to be extra noise, all right? Did staff give any thought to maybe having a fence that goes up at the end of the street that is activated at 7:00 in the morning to then allow them in? So anything prior to that, they just don't have access to it? I can only give you an example, I'm a president of a homeowners' association, we've had some trouble spots as well. So we just put up a fence, and we open it up when we have to open it up. In the meantime, no one has access to it. I'm just trying to think of ways of addressing their concerns, because this will be a compliance nightmare. You'll be getting phone calls. I'm just telling you, you'll be getting phone calls when you go earlier, and you'll do your best job possible, but there's still going to be extra noise. So the idea is, how do you accomplish both? Maybe an idea is to put up a fence that stays locked until 7:00 o'clock in the morning. Does staff, do we have anything like that? I know technology, it's out there, where a gate can actually be lowered at a certain hour, or someone with a key to lower it? Because you've got 350 residents here who, we're saying that, you know, deliveries are going to be the same. Well, maybe, maybe not. So any ideas there?
It's a good concept, however, however, you have to remember that this center can be accessed one way, I mean, in several different ways. The logistics of doing that, the property, there are 10 different property owners here. The east side of the property, of the Oak Brook Shopping Center, is owned by somebody else. The west side is owned by Regency, however, the front area are not totally owned by Regency itself. We have other property owners controlling that, so I don't know how that's going to happen. If a truck driver happens to see a gate behind the property, then he will tend to go into other portion of that site just to wait for, just to wait for the delivery hours or for that gate to open. I mean, this will like, you know, cause problems somewhere else. I'm not saying it can't be done, but the problem is, you have other property owners that will be involved here. And one of my exhibits, I believe, we do have a map of the property ownership. I believe it's, that's attachment number, I think it's attachment number one. So that will probably make it kind of difficult to accomplish. I don't know, maybe, maybe the property owners have, may have an agreement with other property owners. That's something that I don't think staff can address at this time.
Well, maybe for today's--
You couldn't do it today either, just certainly because you don't have everybody present for that type of issue.
Maybe we just make a note that, for the record, this will probably become a compliance issue, and that we need to be, as a city, aware of what their concerns are, and whether it's posting additional signs, or any other measures that some of these professional landowners can have would be great, because what I'm hearing is, I've got 350 residents who doesn't seem like they've had their input. And, you know, I know it's about deliveries, and the hours are the same, but I'm just, this is not the first time I've heard a topic like this, so maybe just make code compliance aware that, all right, if in fact this goes through and it's voted on tonight, there we got some residents who are going to be watching.
Well, let me just, what we did with McDonald's project, the operator of that particular restaurant actually sent out a notice to all their vendors, informing them of the delivery restriction, the services restriction, and, you know, they may have slipped one day or another, but, you know, I don't think I've heard any major problem with the approach. So I guess it's up to the property owner or the applicant to inform their individual vendors and about the delivery and, you know, service restriction hours. That's as far as we could go, I think, with this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chua. Commissioner Trappell.
Just following up really quick, and maybe this is for Mr. Town or Mr. Heard, is if those, if these hours are violated, I know that they aren't changing, because I read that, because opening up at 5:00 o'clock, the only thing that I see coming in in that morning are customers, I can't see trucks coming in at 5:00 o'clock in the morning, but if they did, what, is there a code comply, I mean, is there a penalty? What happens at this level?
Well, I could speak on, certainly on past experience, not necessarily this location, but certainly in my past experience working with code compliance, we've had had issues where there's been a refrigerator truck that's operating, and it goes to a site at a certain time, and it's just continued to operate, sometimes even 24/7, because it's a special time of the year, for example, where there's, you know, a need for, a significant need by that property owner to have a truck there with their refrigeration unit. And we certainly work with those individuals in code compliance and addressing those issues. So we certainly have the experience and a history of responding to complaints and looking at the rules or the law, or whatever we have as far as code compliance is concerned, for violation of a particular code, if you will. So it is something that we have done. I won't speak on behalf of this location simply because I can't give you a specific, I just know that it has been done in the past in other locations.
But there is a process in place.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And if I may, I'm sorry, if I may add to that conversation, condition number eight states a revocation of permit. It actually states that any verified complaints of excessive levels of noise or violation of approved hours of operation shall constitute grounds for initiation of proceedings to consider revocation of this permit and/or further restriction of the hours of operation by the planning commission. So that, I think, is a safeguard in there to say that, you know, we have some safeguards that this approval be not abused.
And that can be triggered by the residents calling into the city?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, we know that there will be some slip-ups. I mean, you know, if we say, hey, you know what, there's a problem here today, and if the problem keeps going on, we keep getting complaints about the same issues on the same business, then we could apply condition number eight.
All right. That's great. Thank you so much.
Any further questions, staff? Okay, with that, Mr. Patrick Conway, you have a five-minute rebuttal to address issues you may have found that you can help us with, or anything else to clear the air, so to speak. If you would please state your name and city residence for the record.
Patrick Conway, Los Angeles. You know, as part of our effort to make some corrections and to make sure everyone really is a good neighbor, you know, every single one of our tenants, you know, has received a notice about, say, Oak Brook Plaza, be a good neighbor, you know, no noise, residents' quiet zone, please be respectful, from 9:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. daily, no deliveries, especially trucks, no grease and sceptor maintenance, no rooftop HVAC or mechanical maintenance, no pallet jack use, no slamming of doors, no truck air brakes release sounds, no idling trucks, no leaf blowers, no lawn mowers. So we've made it really clear to all of our operators, we have signs posted all along the back of the shopping center, noise ordinance in effect between 9:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. So if there are complaints, and we figure out who it is, there's no excuse. Everyone's been noticed, vendors, tenants, you know, across the board. So, you know, I think in general, the smaller shop tenants were really asking to change the hours of operation, they have very few deliveries. I think in general, you know, at least in our experience, and all we really own is grocery anchored centers, it's usually the grocery stores that will have some issues. So we've sent that same notice to Hagan, because they've transferred over to Albertson's. Albertson's, I think, was generally a good operator, and complied with the noise ordinance, but now they had a changeover. We want to make sure the new operator gets off to the right start, and that delivery trucks don't show up early and idle, sit in the back and be a disturbance to the neighbors. So everyone's clearly on notice. And that's all I really wanted to add, unless you had any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Questions? Mr. Conway, I had a question. The, Ms. Schatzky was explaining that she did not feel that their homeowners' group had been reached out to and spoken to, and I was just wanting to give you the opportunity to explain, did you reach out to that homeowners' group, and if so, how'd it go, and if not, why not?
We didn't reach out to the group behind us specifically. You know, my understanding was, through the McDonald's application, there was a specific, you know, direction to have some sort of an election and a group of one or two people that we can communicate with regarding this issue. And I thought, maybe that did encompass everyone, you know, around us. So there was no specific to try to catch, make sure each community, or the back or the front, or the side, was contacted individually. And because it was more about the hours of operation and the shops that were facing north, to me, it just made sense. We knew the groups we were talking to were across via De La Arbolas, so as opposed to, if it was a loading condition or change, that would affect the back of the shopping center much more than kind of a operation of a cleaner or a Subway, or, you know, the Coffee Bean. These are really customers coming in the front of the center and creating more activity in the front than the back.
Okay, I can certainly see the oversight, because all the attention was given to the, you know, McDonald's case, and then Taco Bell to follow. But I would encourage you to reach out to this homeowners' group, because I'm looking at the lay of the land, the lot split between Osh and CVS is the lot split between the Woodlands and the Oak Brook Townhomes. So your property is adjacent to Oak Brook, and then the Oak Brook Center would be adjacent to Woodlands, so it seems like it would be a good relationship to reach out to. And I think, as Mr. Chua pointed out to the residents here, that there appear to be some conditions in place to address the concerns, and, you know, if you need to voice your concern, be sure and do so, and hopefully we can do that, and if you could make sure you have some type of a discussion with the homeowners, I think that would be helpful.
We certainly will. I mean, it makes a lot of sense, because, you know, just like the pad restaurants up front, or maybe closer to the residents across, you know, a lot of our activity is in the back of a center with our loading, and affects those residents behind, and maybe something that we'll, we'll make some contact tonight and kind of start that dialogue immediately.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Conway.
Thank you.
Oh, sure, yeah, Mr. Town, please.
I just, before we close the hearing, I want to be very clear with everybody here tonight and watching. This is one case, but you have two different applicants. Okay, so this is a combined application by Regency Centers and Orchard Supply and Hardware. And for Regency Centers, as we started off our discussion, it is specific, these proposed hours of 5:00 a.m. opening are specific to four tenants only at their current locations, that's Plaza Cleaners, E.T. Donuts, Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf, and Subway. Okay? So that's a proposed 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. hours of operation. Currently, it's 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., but only for those four tenants at those four locations. Orchard Supply Hardware is not asking for a 5:00 a.m. opening. Orchard Supply is asking Monday through Friday to open at 7:00 a.m. They currently are approved for 8:00, and to close at the same time at 9:00 p.m. They're not asking for a 5:00 a.m. opening. Saturday, their hours of 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. remain unchanged, no requested change. I'm sorry, 7:00 to 9:00, Monday through Saturday. But Sundays, they are asking for one more hour in the evening from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Currently, they're 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So you don't have as significant in terms of morning hour changes for Orchard Supply Hardware. So I want to be clear for everybody and for the commission, before you take action on this, that you have two different proposed hours of operation, and those are summarized on page 67 of your packet.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Mr. Chua, could you clarify for me? What would the radius of notification be to this case?
Yeah, the radius of notification would be 500 feet from the property line. Also, I would like to point out that the homeowners' association within one mile radius of this project has been-- of this project has been notified, and I actually have a list of the homeowners association that were sent out to, and I've seen Oakbrook, Oakbrook too, and, let me see, that has been sent out, I mean, that's been, sent out a notification to also. So the HOA was also sent that notification.
So that would include residents of the Oakbrook Townhomes, number one, and also the Woodlands homeowners, the associations, as well as the individual residents, would all be within that radius of notification?
Well, not all residents will be within the 500-foot radius, so they will not get it, and only those who are within 500 feet of the property line of the subject properties.
Okay.
So.
So it would cover a good portion of them, then?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I just wanted to clarify, and then likewise, to the north, it would have covered a number of homes, as well as the townhomes to the north of Avenue de los Arbores?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? Okay with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and open to discussion or a motion from the commissioners.
Make a motion to approve DPMJ 2014-70581, based on the findings and subjects to the attached conditions of approval, including deleting condition number four.
Mr. Heher, is that clear?
Yes, that's good.
Thank you, Mr. Rowntree. Any comments? Mr. Trappell?
Yes, I'm going to support the motion. I think these debates are healthy, and I want to thank you all for really coming down. We do listen to what you're saying. I have a feeling that the applicant is going to be a little bit closer to your concerns, and I hope you do make some connection to do that. I just think it's important people come together and make that happen, because that's the way things work. So I am going to, I don't, I'm still having trouble wrapping my arms around the 5:00 a.m. tenant space thing, but if the applicant says okay, I'm okay with it. So with that, I'm going to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Trappell. And just another clarification for homeowners to the south. With the relationship, I believe, Regency has now settled on in our community. I know they're very conscientious about the neighbors. They're reaching out. I think it was, I can understand the oversight, Hagan's moves in, Albertson's out, you probably think there is a little confusion there, so I can understand that. But I would encourage dialogue and to contact either Mr. Conway or his staff directly, or city staff on issues. I believe we have the conditions in place to address your concerns. So make sure those are voiced, because I think this will be a successful effort because of all the attention, and it's also got the city council's attention as well. So I know they're very conscientious about this. So with that, please vote.
Motion passed, 3-0.
Any grieve party who wishes to appeal the planning commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the community development department within 10 days.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our next regularly scheduled meeting of July 6th has been canceled. We had no items for that night. However, July 13th, as you can see on page 74 of your packet, we have three cases currently, and possibly another, but I think this is most likely going to be your agenda. Following our next meeting will be mid-September. And that's all I had right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town. So I, we just, did you mention the city council items?
However, this was something that we had, I had mentioned verbally at the last meeting, that the commission's decision on the proposed wall on, along Westlake Boulevard, adjacent to Classic Roads Court, which the commission denied on April 27th, that case will be going to city council on appeal to be heard on September 1st.
Okay, thank you. Next is minutes and resolutions.
I have a question. Yeah, I need to abstain. Does that mean, do we still have a quorum?
Do we have a quorum?
Okay, great, then, but I can't make the motion, so I'm going to have to turn that over.
With that, I make a motion to approve planning commission meeting June 8th, and the resolutions of the planning commission also on June 8th.
Thank you, Mr. Rowntree. Just the two of us, please go ahead and vote.
Motion passed with 2 to 1, well, no, 2 to 0, with Commissioner Trappell abstaining.
Thank you very much. Any AB 1234 reports? None. Commission comments? I just had one question for Mr. Town. We received in our packet a draft negative declaration for a future project, the Caneo Specter, Caneo Center Drive area for a land use 2015-70137. And I noticed the public review period was May 27th through June 17th, and we received this on June 17th, which doesn't really give us, as a commissioner, to, much time to respond to that. Is there an opportunity to still comment? What would be the appropriate way to do so?
The appropriate thing still would be to contact either myself or the environmental planner on staff who is preparing that, Mr. Rick Burgess, senior planner, to provide your comments. I understand that that went to you literally on the day that the comments were due, however, given that fact, and that was a result of certain schedules and so forth, you may still contact staff and provide any input on that document.
Okay, thank you. And I trust that we were just the last ones to get this, that everybody else received theirs at the timely basis?
It did go out to others at the beginning of the comment period.
Okay, okay, just want to make sure that that was duly noted. Okay. That being the case, so am I correct, then, that we will be meeting on July 13th? We do have cases that night, correct?
Yes, you have at least three cases that night.
Okay. That case, we will be adjourning. Thank you for coming. Good night, Thousand Oaks. We will see you again 6:30 on July 13th.